Concluding with the 27th of January, we voted on the budget to present to the voters. We're gonna do something different tonight. We're gonna try something new. We're gonna allow the folks at home reviewing, try if they have a question to use their email if they want to ask the question. And the email will be budget, B-U-D-G-E-T, at BenningtonVermont.org. If you have a question, you want to use your email, you can send it there. Mike Harrington is in the back and he's gonna take down the questions. If you're using Facebook, it'll be www.facebook.com/BenningtonVermont, or just VT, okay? I'll say it again, www.facebook.com/BenningtonVT. So those of you at home, if you have a question, go ahead and go on Facebook or your email and send it. We'll collect them and we'll see if we can get them answered tonight.
Yeah?
The email address is BenningtonVT.org. You'd said Vermont.
Okay, I'll do it again for Bennington. Budget@BenningtonVT.org, okay. So we hope we have that. We're gonna start presentation tonight with our school superintendent, Catherine McClure. Catherine, do you want to begin with your folks introducing who you've got here and begin with the presentation?
Thank you. We're very happy to be here and the joint meetings have been very productive. We've learned a lot about the town and the town, select board members about the school districts, and the supervisory union. Tonight, I have with me our chief financial officer, Rick Pembroke. I also have board chair of supervisory union board and the MAU board, Sean Marie-Oler, and Ken Swerad, who is chair of the Bennington Board. I also have directors in the audience, Karen Brunel, early childhood education, Wendy Pierce, special education. I have Frank Barnes, who is director of technology. Principals in the audience are Donna Colley of Monument Elementary School, Jim Law of Bennington Elementary. Donna McKenzie-King of Molly Stark is at a conference, so is not with us tonight, but excused. I also have Sue McGuire, principal of Mount Anthony Union High School, and Tim Payne of the middle school will be joining us very shortly. I have Donna Leep, who's assistant superintendent of schools for the supervisory union. And I'd like to thank Elaine Hewlett, who's sitting at the computer, helping us with our presentation tonight. Jim Culkeen is here as well. He is superintendent and director of the CDC. Jim?
Good evening. I also want to thank the select board for the series of meetings with us. I think the communication has been very helpful and anytime we can all get in the same room together and talk, we all benefit. I have with me this evening our business manager, Stephanie Mulligan, and next to her is the chair of our school board and Jim Bhutan.
Also, I'd like, I'd like the board chairs to introduce their board members. Sean Marie, would you like to start?
Well, I see Dave Frederickson, and I see Nelson Brownell, and they're both on the MAU board. And then, Tim, where's Tim Hayden?
I'm in the back.
Anybody else?
Tim Holbrook.
I won't take up more time, but if you're here, please speak up.
Ken?
Yeah, we have Claude DeLucia from the Bennington School Board. George Sleeman is here from the school board.
Jackie Prue.
And Jackie Prue is here from the Bennington School Board.
Thank you. Our presentation this evening begins with a PowerPoint, a presentation with photographs, points of pride, we like to call them. We have a variety of programs that are opportunities for our students, and you will see pictures of those. We'll move into our financial presentation. Rick Pembroke will be presenting sort of a 101 on state impact on the increases of our budget and are very critical for moving our students funding formulas for schools, as well as our budget proposals in the school districts. forward in their achievement levels. First, I'd like to highlight the early education And then, CDC will follow with their budget proposal, and we'll come back to the town area. Bennington was the first school district in the state to receive $225,000 over two for theirs. So, let us begin. years in philanthropic donations to begin partner programs for all four-year-olds under Act 62. The impact of early education is well documented and is supported by our FY15 budget by $120,000 to assure that all preschoolers are provided with high-quality educational opportunities. Special education. Following the results of the state-focused monitoring visitation and the increasing needs of students with complex special needs, we are increasing the BSD budget by $143,856,000 to include an associate director for greater administrative support and oversight, and include $11610,000 to increase our elementary on-point program as we have moved the middle school age group to the MAU budget, resulting in a concentrated expenditure at the elementary level. Mathematics. This budget includes the purchase of K through 8 mathematics resources, including textbooks and software, to meet national Common Core standards and to raise our performance levels. Our current textbooks and research resources were published in 1999 and have had an impact on our achievement levels. They have not been where we want them to be, and they need to improve. This purchase will help us do that. Technology. I'm sorry, instructional staffing. Our instructional staffing is listed as a strategic investment, not only because of fixed increases in benefits and salary, but because our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our administrators, and our support staff are the heart of what we do in working with our students. Seventy-seven percent of the budget reflects total salary and benefits. 12.14 percent represents the district's share of health insurance. Our staffing ratios of professional staff to students is greater than the average of the state and yet maintains appropriate class sizes at each grade level. These ratios are available on our website. Technology. Thank you, Elaine. BSD, the Bennington School District, and MAU were quick to respond to computer access for each child in the upper primary and grades in middle school. This is the first-year lease payment of $75,000 in the Bennington School District for the purchase of $210,000 of equipment to replace older computers and to provide additional computers for greater student access. This also ensures appropriate technology for meeting the Common Core standards which have been introduced in our curriculum, these national standards, and for the testing which accompanies those standards called S-Back testing. Jim?
At the Creative Element Center, technology that is impacting our budget for strategic investments to replace our equipment is, our budget contains funds to lease to own two computer labs as replacement for computer labs that exceed five years in age. At the Technology Center, it is tough for us to, to remain on the cutting edge of instructional technology without constantly upgrading these computers. These computers have already had improvements, upgrades done to them and they're beyond the grade that they can be upgraded anymore and must therefore be replaced. This continues with the technology integration that we've been doing in our past two budgets. We are graded also on, on the academic performance of our students, and our grant funding is tied to how our students perform on standardized testing from a composite score of all the schools that they come to us from. Therefore, we have to upgrade our technology to integrate Common Core subject matter into technology education. And that is the reason why we've installed the latest generation smart boards in our classrooms. We have a 25-unit iPad learning lab for the integration of mathematics into our curriculum. And that's, the rest is, of the technology list is really what's happened in past budget, but that's what's impacting our budget this year. So the last thing that is a strategic investment for the Creative Element Center for this proposed school year is a piece of heavy equipment. In our Forestry program, we have a bulldozer as well as a backhoe. And the backhoe is over 20 years old, and we are spending more per year to maintain it than we think it's, it's worth. So, our budget this year has a first-year lease payment, or for next proposed budget, first-year lease payment to purchase this piece of equipment over five years. And it is something that is, is used almost every day in that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Rick, would you begin with our proposed budgets, and you'll be moving into state funding as well?
Yeah, what I'm gonna attempt to do is to very quickly walk you through the education funding formula that determines the tax rate for each community. This is gonna, this is gonna happen very quickly, and there is more detail in our annual reports. But basically, it's your, it's our expenditures, less our revenue determines what needs to be raised through the education fund. We take into account our equalized pupils to determine our cost per pupil. We then measure that against the state baseline and determine what a tax rate will be, which is then adjusted by the CLA. And I'm gonna walk you through that process. As you can see on the board, we've, I've broken down-
Excuse me, Rick. Are we gonna take, turn the camera on the board while you're talking on it?
On the PowerPoint to the screen. Thank you.
As you can see on the screen, this is Bennington's portion and Bennington's portion of MAU's portion of the SVSU. You hear about the alphabet soup a lot in, in education, and this is the ultimate description of that. Most people see a SVSU budget of $16 million and think, oh my God, I've gotta raise $16 million for that. First of all, all of that money is double-booked within the local districts. So you, you see that embedded into the local budgets when you go to vote on that, and I'll show you that a little bit later on. But of that $16 million, roughly 13 million of that is special ed. Special education is embedded within the SVSU per statute, and it is then billed back to the local districts on a direct bill. What you're seeing up here on the board is not any of that special ed. This is the administrative cost associated with running the supervisory union, and it's BSD's portion of that, and it's BSD's portion of MAU. So what I'm trying to say here is this $1.3 million of MAU is just BSD's portion. MAU has a larger amount of the SVSU cost in there, but not what Bennington pays. The next section of the budget is BSD's, Bennington School District. I gave you just a summary here, showing you the general education. Again, this special education of $4 million, you see that both in the SVSU as well in the BSD. It's double accounted for. The rest of that stuff is fairly, Student Support Service represents, your library guidance, nursing services make up a large portion of that. So if you take the $12,000 and then this $955,000, that'll be the amount we'll see on the ballot. And again, I'll show you that at a later point in time. 12 million, I'm sorry. My wish, 12,000. Next section is Mount Anthony's. Again, this is just BSD's portion of Mount Anthony. It is allocated, Mount Anthony's allocated out based on an equalized pupil basis. I'm not gonna go into the details of equalized pupils, but it's not, it's not a student in the seat. It's weighted based on English as a second language and poverty. MAU's budget is roughly $26 million. Of that $26 million, 3.6 million of it, help me Stephanie, is the CDC's. And although not all 3.6 ends up at Mount Anthony, good portion of it does. And then that gets allocated out to Bennington. The final section is the CDC section. Of the money that's allocated to Mount Anthony, 1.6 million of that is Bennington's share. Again, I think their budget is 3.6 as a whole, as I recall. So all that together is $31 million and change, $32 million. So, the misconception that a number of people have is they see SVSU at 16 million, they see BSD at 13 million, they see Mount Anthony at 26 million, they see, they see the CDC at 3.6 million, and they think that's what they have to raise taxes on. That's not the case. They only need to raise their proportionate share, which in this case is $31.8 million. This is just a pictorial slide of the last numbers we just saw that shows where the majority of the dollars are being spent throughout the education system. And it's, if you look at the title, it's pre-K through adult. There's a number of circumstances where we go beyond the 12th grade largely at the technical center with adult programs they have there. But it's more than just K to 12. This is a section Catherine spoke of it earlier, and it's just a quick pictorial, you know, if you look at these three pieces of the pie here, salary, health insurance, and other benefits, three, roughly three-quarters of our budget is, is personnel. And it's, it's managed very well. Again, Catherine mentioned it earlier, I don't, roughly K to 12, I think we are about 17 to 18 to 1, student-teacher ratio. Those numbers are in our annual reports. They're, they're required state reports that we have to report out to the community on an annual basis. State average, our peers' state average, not the state average, our peers' state average based on the number of students in our schools, is about 11 to 12 to 1. So, we're doing a much better job, dependent on your point of view. You know, with, with fairly good student-teacher ratios, we're managing our personnel well, I believe. Revenue, this stuff's gonna fly in here fairly quickly. What I really want, want you to focus on are those first two slides, the lime green, 4.7 million, and the purple here is 7.6 million. This green slide is your homestead education taxes, and the next slide is the non-residential education taxes. So, this is the property taxes. $12 million roughly is raised through the property tax to pay this $32 million bill. I don't think very many people understand where a lot of these dollars come from. Another thing I want to take focus on is the fund balance here. And this is a, this, these are all, these are all proportionally allocated numbers between BSD, Mount Anthony, and the CDC. When you're looking at a $1.8 million fund balance, people get critical of that, and I can understand the first reaction of that, but they have to understand that through Act 68, we are required to give that money back to the taxpayers and determine local revenue. This is used to reduce taxes. We can't squirrel it away and use it as we wish at a later date unless the voters give us specific authorization. We are required, as we are demonstrating here, to give that back. And the other reason I want to point this out is our administrators work very hard with me to spend every dollar they get very wisely. It's not, oh my, you know, I've got this budget, I'm gonna automatically spend this entire budget. We work very hard to be diligent of the taxpayer dollars. And I take that as a, as a positive indication that we do that, as opposed to some people thinking that we're over-budgeting. Most of that fund balance comes through the form of unexpected revenues, higher-than-anticipated reimbursement rates for special education, transportation, and other things. Expense-wise, we're generally within 2% to 3% of our expense budget. So I think we have a very responsible budget. If you look down here in this, MAU colored blue, I guess for lack of a better description, that $12 million coming from the education fund is, Bennington is considered a receiving community, and what that means is exactly what that slide is showing, that we receive money in to help support our education system from other communities. You heard, the term used to be called gold towns. They don't call it that anymore. They call them, I think, sending towns. There's the gas tax in there, there's a piece of the Roman meals tax in there, there's a various lotteries in there, there's a bunch of various sources that help support that $12.7 million. But if you walk away from anything on this slide, just please realize that of the $32 million we need to educate, to educate our students, 12 of it is raised through the property tax. Next slide, please. Equalized pupils. Everyone has heard stories about declining population. If you look at BSD on the bottom, they have declined a little bit from FY9 through FY11 to 12. They've stayed fairly flat, and that's pretty indicative of all of our elementary districts. We, we've generally hit bottom. I know that's not the case across the state. There's some still declining that's going on across the state. And if you look at Mount Anthony, which is the upper bar, they started to feel that decline at the elementaries, which is logical. The kids, you know, matriculate up through the system, and they're now towards the end of their decline, and they will start to see their numbers level off as well. So, you see stories, you hear, you hear people talk, you know, this drastic decline in student population, which across the state is correct, but locally, isn't necessarily as dramatic as some would think it would be. So, if, if you take, and again, I'm kinda walking you through the ed system here, the funding system. So you take the, the expenses and you take the revenue, and you, and then you divide your equalized pupils into that, and you come up with your ed spending per equalized pupil. Most people call it the cost per student or cost per pupil. BSD is at 11, 989. We've actually had criticism that they're not spending enough money on their student population. Mount Anthony's at 13, 3. The, my current projection for the state average will be 13, 670. That number doesn't get set until all the budgets have passed. But based on what I'm seeing for, for trends across the state, that's my guess of where they'll be. The current state average for this year is right around 13, 3, I think. 13, 4, somewhere in that ballpark. So, what does it mean on the ballots? What I'm trying to show here is, and BSD is simple. We're, we live in Bennington. This is a Bennington community. BSD's gonna have a ballot article of $13 million, and Bennington is responsible for $13 million. Mount Anthony Article C is gonna have a ballot article of $26 million. This does not include the CDC. When Act 130 was, was created, or passed, to create Mount Anthony as a taxing district, the legislature somehow chose not to or forgot. I don't think they actually thought about it. There's three tech centers in the state that are independent, and in my opinion, should have a similar taxing authority that Mount Anthony has. But because they don't, the CDC number has to be within Mount Anthony. So when you're looking at the annual report, you're gonna see a number of roughly $28 million, I think, to make up for the other $2 million that the CDC has to, we have, that Mount Anthony has to raise on CDC's behalf. So of this $26 million, based on the Bennington's population in Mount Anthony, Bennington is only responsible for $17 million. And that flows through the CDC. So the CDC is putting out an article of $3.7 million. Mount Anthony is somewhere in the neighborhood of 95% of their population, of which Bennington has a proportion of that, which calculates down to $1.6 million, which again brings us to the $32 million. This is, you know, this is, I think, a very critical slide. I think the confusion has been, people think, well, it's 13 plus 26 plus 4, that's a lot of money. It is. $32 million is still a lot of money, but it's not the total of all of them together. Common level of appraisal. Both Stu and I are gonna touch on this a- lotteries in there, there's a bunch of various sources that help support that twelve point seven million dollars. But if you walk away from anything on this slide, just please realize that of the thirty-two million dollars we need to educate, to educate our students, twelve of it is raised through the property tax. Next slide, please. Equalized pupils. Everyone has heard stories about declining population. If you look at BSD on the bottom, they have declined a little bit from FY nine through FY eleven to twelve. They've stayed fairly flat, and that's pretty indicative of all of our elementary districts. We've generally hit bottom. I know that's not the case across the state, there's some still declining that's going on across the state. And if you look at Mount Anthony, which is the upper bar, they started to feel that decline that the elementaries, which is logical, the kids, you know, matriculate up through the system, and they're now towards the end of their decline, and they will start to see their numbers level off as well. So you see stories, you hear, you hear people talk, you know, this drastic decline in student population, which across the state is correct, but locally isn't necessarily as dramatic as some would think it would be. So if you take, and again, I'm kinda walking you through the ed system here, the funding system, so you take the expenses and you take the revenue, and then you divide your equalized pupils into that, and you come up with your ed spending per equalized pupil. Most people call it the cost per student or cost per pupil. BSD is at eleven nine eighty-nine. We've actually had criticism that they're not spending enough money on their student population. Mount Anthony's at thirteen three. My current projection for the state average will be thirteen six seventy. That number doesn't get set until all the budgets have passed, but based on what I'm seeing for trends across the state, that's my guess of where they'll be. The current state average for this year is right around thirteen three, I think, thirteen four, somewhere in that ballpark. So what does it mean on the ballots? What I'm trying to show here is, and BSD is simple, we live in Bennington, this is a Bennington community, BSD is gonna have a ballot article of thirteen million dollars, and Bennington is responsible for thirteen million dollars. Mount Anthony Article C is gonna have a ballot article of twenty-six million dollars. This does not include the CDC. When Act one thirty was created, or passed, to create Mount Anthony as a taxing district, the legislature somehow chose not to or forgot, I don't think they actually thought about it. There's three tech centers in the state that are independent, and in my opinion should have a similar taxing authority that Mount Anthony has. But because they don't, the CDC number has to be within Mount Anthony. So when you're looking at the annual report, you're gonna see a number of roughly twenty-eight million dollars, I think, to make up for the other two million dollars that the CDC has to, we, that Mount Anthony has to raise on CDC's behalf. So of this twenty-six million dollars, based on Bennington's population in Mount Anthony, Bennington is only responsible for seventeen million dollars, and that flows through the CDC. So the CDC is putting out an article of three point seven million dollars. Mount Anthony is somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-five percent of their population, of which Bennington has a proportion of that, which calculates down to one point six million dollars, which again brings us to the thirty-two million dollars. This is, you know, this is, I think, a very critical slide. I think the confusion has been, people think, well, it's thirteen plus twenty-six plus four, that's a lot of money. It is, thirty-two million dollars is still a lot of money, but it's not the total of all of them together. Common level of appraisal. Both Stu and I are gonna touch on this a little bit. This is an adjustment calculation outside of the control of the education system. In short, a hundred percent, although this wasn't really a hundred, I think it was like ninety-nine point seven or something in that year, a hundred percent is where you wanna be. We are currently at eighty-nine and change for this year. What that means is properties are selling at roughly eleven percent more than the grand list has them valued at. That's a double-sided coin. If you're trying to sell your house, that's good. If you're trying to pay your taxes, it's painful because as a result of the state equalizing our grand list to the rest of the state, and you'll see this later on, we need to pay a premium on top of our taxes to equalize that number. And hopefully that'll show up here. So from a tax rate standpoint, there's multiple components that go into the tax that we pay. The state sets a base rate, I don't know how well people can see, but it's, you know, started, it started at somewhere above a dollar whenever it back. It's, it was FY oh nine, it was at eighty-seven cents, it dropped down, it's coming back up. Largely that is coming up for a number of reasons. One of the big one is the state's grand list is actually somewhat depressed, so the only balancing number the state can use to balance the education fund is the property tax. And when the value of the properties go down, everyone knows that the rate has to go up. So you see that climb in the state. The next factor on there is the CLA adjustment. You can see in FY oh nine, it was as little as one one hundredths of a cent because we were very near one hundred percent. We've been as high as nearly nineteen cents in FY eleven. We're currently looking at a, an adjustment of seventeen cents on the FY fifteen calculation. BSD is the next factor, you can see what that's done over time. That's gone from a low of, you know, three point seven cents in FY eleven to what is projected to be the current trend high of just under twelve and a half cents. Mount Anthony, they are, have stayed fairly consistent. They're, they had a low of about fifteen cents in FY eleven, and they're looking at twenty-one, a little over twenty-one cents in FY fifteen. And then the CDC, as you could imagine, they're very, very small numbers of small budgets, you know, they're roughly two to two and a half cents on the budget. So as you can see there, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at an increase of about thirteen and a half cents on the tax rate, and I'll show you what makes up that increase for this next year. The state's increase is seven cents, the CLA is costing us, you know, a little over five cents. BSD is one point one cent on that tax rate. MAU is negligible, and the CDC is negligible. As you can see, I think this, this graph is, is pretty telling. You know, we can't do much to affect the tax rate increases that are being delivered to us through external sources.
Thank you, Rick. Joe?
Thank you, Rick, and Catherine, and everyone that presented. Let me ask Dan, did you get any call-ins for questions on the school budget portion?
We did have a question, and this is multiple parts, but just probably for clarification because I think some have been answered since it was asked. What is the difference between the base education spending amount per equalized pupil specified by the Vermont Legislature for the proposed budget? What is the base education spending amount per equalized pupil that the SVSU is proposing in the budget? What is the difference? And what does that equal on the overall tax rate per hundred dollars?
Hundred thousand.
Just go back to that slide.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be able to answer the last part of that question because I don't have my computer with me, but yeah, Elaine, if you can take me back to, well, take me back to the ed spending per equalized pupil. Nope, yep, that one right there. So there's two, there's two rates here. Mount Anthony is at thirteen three, BSD is roughly twelve thousand dollars. The state base, I believe, is ninety-three hundred and change. I don't have that number with me off the top of my head either, but that's, that's roughly where we're gonna be, and that's, that's the difference. So BSD is gonna be, you know, about fifteen hundred dollars over. Mount Anthony is roughly about four thousand dollars over that number. And I'll have to get back somehow to the questionnaire of, because those, those rates get blended together to come up with the tax rate, to determine what, how much of that is driving the tax rate. But I can't answer that tonight, unfortunately, I apologize.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine and Rick. Next, we'll get into the town portion of the budget, and Stu Hurd was gonna take, take us through that one.
I will. And Elaine, if you could stop at the last school budget, the last slide for the school group with the CLA. Okay, back one, please, if you can. This is all, this is all new to me, I'm an old dog when it comes to this kind of thing. The CLA, Rick touched on that, and the common level of appraisal, you may all recall that the town went through what it was called a rolling reappraisal several years ago. That brought us up near to the one hundred percent. We have allowed that to flow with the cost of homes through the depressed economy, as well as into now where we're starting to see an improvement in the real estate values. The town can't react as quickly as perhaps everyone would like us to, to those changing values, and the beauty or the terror in the equalized grand list, for each community, the state is attempting to level the playing field. So yes, our equalized grand list number causes an increase in the school tax rate of five cents. If in fact we were at a hundred percent, the home that now is a hundred thousand might be a hundred and fifty thousand. And even though that rate comes down, you're likely to be paying the same amount in taxes based on the CLA portion of the education tax. It might not level perfectly, but that's, that's what the equalized grand list is supposed to do, is level that playing field throughout the state. And then you have to throw into that the cost of doing a reappraisal. And also, the state does provide us with funds every year to help us set aside funds for our reappraisal. Ultimately, the drop-dead level of appraisal for which the town would be penalized is eighty percent. So we're, we're close to ninety percent now, we're about halfway to where we ought to be in everybody's best of all worlds, but it is something that we have to face. This board will have to take a look at that, and we have to balance the cost of the appraisal, the impact of a reappraisal on property taxpayers, and when is the appropriate time to do it? So it does impact our school taxes, clearly. It's, it's something that has grown from last year to this year. I think it was only two cents last year because we were at ninety-one percent. But as the differences in sales and the differences in assessed values change, that fluctuates almost on an annual basis. And with that, I think we can go into the town's presentation. The town's budget proposed this year is eleven point five million. In two thousand twelve, it was ten point five million. So we, we've seen an increase in the expenditure side of the budget, and that's what we're looking at here, and that's what the voters actually vote on, is what we're spending. This does not take into account any of the revenue pictures that would be part of the tax rate, and we'll get into that a little bit as we move through the presentation. So the overall increase in the budget over the last four fiscal years has been just about a million dollars. And as I said, you can see how it has fluctuated, but it's been relatively flat. And this year, we're looking at about a four point three five percent increase in the expenditure side of the budget. Next slide, please. What makes up the town of Bennington's budget? As you can see, it is police and highway expenditures. And these are the two things that, that most people, when they're looking for municipal services, besides the friendly folks that are the select board and the manager's office and all of the accountants and everything else that we do here, it's police and highway. Highway services, police protection. And both budgets are in excess of three million dollars this year, and both have gone up this year, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we move through. This would be the breakdown of the budget, similar to what the schools have showed you. Fifty-four percent of the municipal budget is salaries and benefits. Infrastructure are those things such as building maintenance, building improvements, those things that we have to do to maintain the structures in which we inhabit and do our business from. This year, capital purchases is only about two percent of the budget, and capital purchases would be major equipment purchases, and we'll talk a little bit, we'll show you what some of those are this year. Highway fund budget, obviously, is a fairly substantial portion of our budget. And then public safety, which makes up police and fire, is the other substantial portion of our budget. General operations are basically the things that, that we must do to provide you with the services that we have, and you'll note that the last little section there is the agencies that the town funds from its general fund budget. Some of those will be on the ballot this year, some of those, such as the John McCullough Library and the Bennington Free Library, are brought into the budget and voted, voted on by the select board prior to the budget being presented. And as we talk about the agencies, these are the number of agencies that Bennington has funded through two thousand thirteen and are proposed for funding in two thousand fourteen. Those with the double asterisks will be on the ballot, so they will each require a vote by the individual who's in the polling booth in order to gain the funding that is shown there. Those folks who are asking for more than seventy-five hundred dollars under select board policy must petition. So what you see there is the Visiting Nurses Association at twenty-one six, Bennington Project Independence, I think at something like eleven thousand, and the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, or the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless is at twenty-five thousand. Those were specifically petitioned requests. The BCRC, which has no asterisks, next is Bennington County Regional Commission, that is an agency dues-paying organization, regional planning commission basically, that Bennington belongs to, and we are billed based on our population. So that one goes into the budget, as does North Bennington Recreation, as does Lake Perrin. So North Bennington is shown with a double asterisk, it is not actually voted on, those monies are incorporated within the budget. And then you see the McCullough Library, and the Bennington Free Library should be there somewhere. And that stands alone, and you can see it at the top of the screen there. It is by far and away the largest agency funding, but obviously it relies entirely, not entirely, because it's only about sixty percent of their budget, I believe, on the taxpayers of Bennington to support the Bennington Free Library. And it's a private nonprofit. Next slide, please. So what makes up part of the budget this year, and is part of the increase of four percent? The Colville Road Bridge, which is a, approximately a twenty-five to thirty-foot span across South Stream, out on Colville Road, it is, one of the abutments is a dry-laid stone abutment that has now been begun to erode, thanks partially to Tropical Storm Irene when the rivers were running very high, and partly due to the age of the, the structure. The bridge is rated as poor by the state highway folks, the inspectors who inspect the bridge, and we have been on track to try to get this bridge replaced for the last three years. We first received a grant from the State of Vermont Structures Program to do the engineering analysis and design. That was, I think, an eighty-five thousand dollar grant. This year, we have decided to move that bridge forward based on the most recent engineer's report, which we just received approximately three weeks ago. They are, have become, become very concerned about the structural capability of the abutment. We will realign the bridge so that it is safer when you access it from Colville Road, and it'll have new abutments and a new deck. The cost is estimated at five hundred and four thousand dollars. We will most likely, if we are fortunate enough to, receive a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar structures grant to offset that, but the majority of that cost will be paid for out of the highway fund budget. It is considered to be a local road bridge, it receives no other state or federal support. We have two new vehicles in the police department. One is a detective's vehicle, which will be a fuel-efficient, smaller vehicle, unmarked. The old one is, I think, I wanna say it's six or seven years old, it has in excess of eighty thousand miles on it, and it is time for it to go. It's beginning to cost us substantial sums to keep it on the road. The other will be a replacement of one of our SUVs with a new SUV. That vehicle, the one we are trading, is two years old and has in excess of eighty-five thousand miles. Generally, the police cruisers that are on the road twenty-four seven, at the end of two years have, in the department that owns it, and it's gonna be a highway department vehicle. Next slide. So what's happened to the grand list since two thousand nine? In spite of the depressed economy, our grand list has continued to grow. We've got some new development taking place now. I think this year, we've seen an increase in the number of single-family homes being built. Obviously, we've seen some commercial development taking place that we haven't had in years past, so we're, we're, we're thinking that we're on the right track with the grand list, and it will continue to grow, which is, I think, important when you consider the direct impact that the grand list has on the town tax rate. Next slide, please. And this is a picture of the town's tax rate from two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen. It's gone up, yes, I think about fourteen percent over the last five fiscal years, which is just under three percent per year. I think that's been, thanks in part to the small growth in the grand list, thanks in large amount to the select board and their, their very cautious approach to budgeting and budgets that have been approved, and we hope that at the end of this process, in the end of this voting period, we'll, we'll have another approved budget and we'll have another approved budget and we'll be able to move forward. As I said, this year's budget is up just a little over 4 percent, and the impact is four cents on the tax rate. And I think that brings us to the next slide. And so this is what you're going to be looking at as a homeowner or a property owner this year. If you are a resident of Bennington, we're looking here at the homestead tax rate, not, not the, no, I can't even think of what it's called. Non-residential, thank you. The town's tax rate will go from 98.64 cents to a dollar 2.63, just about four cents. Now, that's based on the current grand list. Grand list as we see it, when this calculation was made, which was at the end of last week. If the grand list, which is not set until sometime in June, based on an April 1 date, if that grand list grows, that impact will be reduced. So that's what you're going to see. That's the maximum impact of the town's tax rate impact. Education tax will probably have the same impact. If in fact the grand list grows come April 1, this will be adjusted slightly, and the state is looking at a dollar 54 combined tax rate of $2.57 per 100 dollars of assessed value. Next slide, please. And what we're going to attempt to show you here is how all of these impact, and this is going to be fun because I've not worked with Elaine on the presentation of this one. But here, here you have the state's tax rate, base tax rate of seven cents on a 100,000 dollar home will be about 70 dollars a year, or we could break it down to 19 cents a day. The CLA impact at 5.1 cents is 51 dollars and 60 cents per year, or an additional 14 cents per day. The TOB is the Town of Bennington. We're at 39.9, or 39 dollars and 90 cents a year, based on our tax rate impact, a little over, just under 11 cents a day. The BSD impact at 11, 1.13 cents, I'm sorry, is 11 dollars and 30 cents a year, or about 3 cents a day. The CDC at a minuscule amount of, what is that?
One tenth of one cent.
One tenth of one cent. A dollar 50 a year for the CDC, for those of us who might own a home in the 100,000 dollar range, or about 4 tenths of a cent a day, if I got that right. And then Mount Anthony at one point, well, a dollar 10 a year. I'm not going to try to do the decimals anymore. My math mind is long gone, which is about 3 tenths of a cent a day. The combined impact of 17 and a half cents on the tax rate amounts to 175 dollars and 40 cents a year. That is the increase that you will see in your taxes if you own a 100,000 dollar home, based on today's grand list and the figures that we have talked about this, this evening, which amounts to about 48 cents a day. And the final two slides, this one talks about the floor meeting for March 3, which is less than a month away. Mount Anthony will start their hearing at 6:15 here in this building, in this same area. The CDC will follow at 6:30, the BSD at 6:45, and the Town of Bennington will begin at 7 o'clock. If any of those meetings run over, then all of those times will be pushed back, but we're going to try to run them seamlessly, one into the other, so that a, a person who wants to attend all of the meetings can come in at 6:15 and stay right through and be fully entertained and, and appreciate the information that's being provided to you. And I think we're open for questions.
Okay, Michael, did you receive any for Stuart?
None, just none.
Okay. Any questions from the audience that want to ask something on the briefing? Patrick? Move to the mic, Patrick, please.
Patrick McCarroll from the Rutherford Herald. Stuart, were you just saying that that's 175 dollars increase? So whatever your tax rate was last year, 100,000 dollars plus 175 dollars?
That's correct.
Okay. And Rick, do you happen to have the previous years for BSD and MAU for comparison?
Yeah, they were, they were on that, they're on that one slide. They're in, I should, I neglected to say, there's some handouts down there on the table where Mike is, that covers some of those, and has all those rates in there for the prior, I don't know, six, seven years.
And then the last thing, this might be for Mike, is this presentation going to be on the website, one of the websites, either the town or the schools?
Michael, are you going to post this on the website?
We'll do our best. It's a very large document, but we might be able to cut some of the photos out and make it work. We'll just try to get it out tomorrow.
Okay.
We can have it on ours.
And I do have one other comment, Joe, and I excused, had to excuse myself during the meeting. I did receive a phone call from someone at home that indicated that we were having a little bit of problems with being able to see the screen because of fuzziness. So if anyone who couldn't pick up on the screen what was being presented the, this evening, just call either Rick or me, and we'll, we'll try to get you the information. We do have some color slides here that were, we were working off of, and, I mean, there was a lot of information provided. We attempted to talk you through it, but if you're sitting at home and your, and your screen's a little bit fuzzy, you're not going to see everything that everybody else saw.
Thanks, Stuart. This is the first time that, in my memory, that we've seen a briefing like this given on the budgets for this education in our community and the town. And I'd like to hear, and I think everybody sitting at this table would like to hear from folks, is, is it worthwhile thing for us to do? I know that we can, we're going to continue our meetings that we do with the, with the school boards and the supervisory folks. I think it's an important thing, as, as we heard say, that we're all gaining from that. But I think it's important, and I think it was a good briefing on both parts, and I hope it was informational to those watching. So please give us some feedback on that, if you would, please. So I think what we'll do is take a short recess. For those that want to leave, can leave, and then we'll continue at the select board meeting. So let's take about a 10-minute recess right now and just stretch.
Nice job.
I just had me thinking that the aeropods were that year that they were respective.
Nice job. Hard. Thank you. Good to see you.
I'll call a meeting back to order. We have Jim back. He'll make it. Okay, we'll call a meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is proclamation, March as a myeloma awareness month. Sharon, would you read the proclamation, please?
Sure. Proclamation, myeloma awareness month. Whereas multiple myeloma or myeloma is the second most common blood cancer worldwide, is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow. It is called multiple because the cancer can occur in multiple sites. Whereas multiple myeloma currently affects more than 100,000 people in the United States with an estimated 20,000 new cases diagnosed each year and 10,000 losing their battle each year. And whereas, because myeloma is a rare disease, there can be a delayed diagnosis leading to delayed treatment. For this reason, an increased awareness of myeloma for clinicians and the general public will lead to earlier diagnosis, allowing people to live longer. And whereas continued investment and innovation is critical to achieve early diagnosis and implement the most effective and safest treatments for the myeloma patients. And whereas, although we have seen important advances in the last decade, there is still no cure for myeloma. And thus, the Town of Bennington, Vermont, is committed to finding a cure for myeloma and supports the treatment of its citizens that suffer from myeloma and encourages private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs. And now therefore, we, Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as multiple myeloma awareness month in the Town of Bennington, and encourage all residents to join in participating in voluntary activities to support myeloma education and the funding of research programs to find a cure.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the proclamation?
Remove to accept that proclamation.
In a second, Joe. In a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's 6-4, one absent.
I'll circulate for signatures.
Okay. And the next item is the liquor and tobacco licenses. You'll circulate them also.
I shall.
And Stuart, you want to go to the manager's report?
Don't have any action items, just a, a quick announcement, and I know it's early on to be announcing the household hazardous waste collection days. But this year, our collection days are scheduled for May 10, 2014, and October 11, 2014. And we are working with a, a group who have the potential to add latex paints to our collection programs. The paint would be recycled appropriately and be taken. At the same time, oil-based paints and others that are considered hazardous would be. In the past, we have discouraged the collection of latex paints at household hazardous waste days because they are not considered hazardous. But under a new program that, that potentially will be announced this March, as early as this March, this may be an alternative that will be available to everyone in Bennington and throughout the state of Vermont if it all goes well. Last year at this time, we presented a fire department reimbursement ordinance. It actually was originally put before the board in March and April of 2012. Last year, the board sought additional clarification on a number of issues in the wording, and Paul and the fire chiefs are undertaking a thorough review of this particular proposal in hopes that we'll be able to present it to you for adoption at some point in the future this year. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Dustin, any other business?
I don't, Joe.
Jim?
I don't, sir.
Tom?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Greg? Sharon?
No, thank you.
Stuart, when will the annual reports be ready for the citizens?
The annual reports are at the printers right now, so they should be back, I'm, I'm going to say within the week, and it'll be uploaded onto the web at the same time.
And distribution for those who want a hard copy?
They can come to the town offices and, or request one via phone at 442-1037, or email at, either through the select board's email at benningtonvt.org, and we'll get one out to them.
Okay, thanks, Stuart. Okay, we have need to go to an executive station for a real estate contract.
Salute.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And that is 6-4, one absent. Thank you, folks.